Okay, so appointments. William Walden, election of board of registrars term to expire. We'll do these together, I guess? So this is board of registrars and Greenway?
Do I do the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. Okay.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This is on? Okay. We're going to go ahead and do appointments. So these, board of registrars and Greenway? How does this work? Robin Richards, board of registrars, term to expire, and then also Greenway?
Oh, good. No.
Okay.
That's me, I'm cutting pace, sorry.
Okay. Is it just board of registrars?
Just board of registrars, yes.
Okay. So not Greenway, neither one of them?
No.
Walden either?
Nope.
Okay, so...
So these guys are both just going for board of registrar? Correct.
Okay. Term to expire 2020, and then Virginia Huntley, elections, election officer warden, term to expire August 31st, 2020.
So can I ask a question about the board of registrars?
Mm-hmm.
In terms of, how many people are on it? And did someone resign? Well, obviously, these people, did someone resign that they're replacing? Neither one of them?
That, I don't know.
I wonder if Lucy knows. Hi Lucy.
What's up?
On the board of registrars, go ahead.
You go ahead, you have the question.
Yeah, go ahead. What's the question?
The question is, you have two people listed here. Did someone resign that we're replacing, or are these just regular vacancies?
No, regular vacancies. William Walden is, when, the last time I asked him, he wants to be just an alternate.
Okay.
So that's why we reappointed him.
So this should be for an alternate?
Yeah.
Okay. So he's an alternate now.
And Robin Richards?
Yeah.
A regular member?
Yeah.
So how many members then in total?
Three, including me. Or four, including me.
Who's the fourth?
Joyce, got that. She's done in next June, 2020.
And people who were on, already on it, resigned?
There hasn't been, they've done the, they've done it for alongside us, Janine, Joyce, myself.
Okay, have we already appointed?
I was thinking of Pierre, he was on for a while.
No, he did not want to be on it. He chose not to because there were restrictions that he didn't like.
Okay, okay.
But have we, are we appointed Joyce then, 2020, or no?
No, her term is still good.
Until, okay.
Until 2020.
Thank you.
Until 2020, yeah.
Okay, good. All right, so we have William Walden and Robin Richards, and then Virginia Huntley, which is election officer warden. And that's August 31st, 2020. I have a motion to approve.
Yeah, I move to approve William Walden as an alternate to the board of registrars, Robin Richards to the board of registrars, and Virginia Huntley as an election officer slash warden.
I'll second it. All those in favor? Next, we have a joint meeting with the Board of Health to appoint a resident Rebecca, hi Rebecca, to the Board of Health to fill a vacancy until the next election, which is May 19, 2020.
There we go.
Does Rebecca, does she have?
So Shelley Hall, Southern County Circle, acting chair of Board of Health. We were here a few weeks ago. The Health Department had appointed Becky, and Charlie took the vacant slot. And now we've already received Sharon's letter of resignation. So we would, as the board, we would like, Charlie and I would like to appoint Becky to take Sharon's spot on our board.
Thanks. And then you spoke last time about your background, and so thank you very much for your patience and for stepping up. Appreciate that.
Thank you. I move to appoint Rebecca as a member of the Board of Health.
I'll second it. All those in favor? All right.
It's gotta be a voice vote. Roland, uh?
All those, I...
Tish, for the...
Roden. Thank you.
And you too.
Thank you.
They're reviewing.
Okay. O'Connell, I?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
There are no hearings. We're gonna skip over select board reports for a minute, along with the minutes, just to make sure that we have time to go through the rest of the agenda. So town administrator report?
Sure. The invitation to bid packages for La Bree Field, the fieldhouse and site improvements and the septic system are out and available. Our state annual inspection for the Town Hall elevator has been moved to Monday, November 25th. We are starting the process for the yearly renewal letters to be sent out for liquor licenses, gum and victular, entertainment and coin op licenses, and licenses and permits from our office. The phone lines, which were still remaining, that were still out and not working at Town Hall due to last week's storm, were repaired on Monday, except for one exception. It turned out today that the Board of Health was still having some issues with their phone line and fax line, so that was, those two were repaired late this afternoon. So some got repaired on Thursday, some got repaired yesterday, and the last ones were taken care of today. See, I have been told that the hearing in Boston for House 1790, which would allow CPA funds to be utilized where rail banking agreements are in place, went very well, and those in attendance thought the legislatures were very attentive and interested in helping to solve this issue. They had not been aware that this was actually a statewide issue and thought it was only pertinent to Sudbury. I will keep you posted as we hear more on this proposed legislation. This would greatly help us with our Greenway project if it moves forward and is approved. I did send the co-chairs and committee members of the Joint Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government support testimony letter on behalf of the town. Old business, we met with Jamie Reinhardt from Hill Engineers Architects at the Old Town Hall for a tour of the exterior and interior of the building, and he will be presenting a proposal to perform an envelope study of the Old Town Hall at 8 East Street. We will be also meeting with William Devlin from Devlin Architecture at the Old Town Hall for the same purpose this Friday afternoon. I was joined on that tour by Bob Coz of Doric Dodd and Don Warren from the Historical Commission, and also Chief Illingsworth. And upcoming select board meetings are scheduled for November 12th and the 26th.
I thought we had penciled in the 29th, so we're taking it off, just as a just-in-case?
October 29th?
That's my imagination.
I think we talked about whether we might need to have it or not. We were gonna wait and see how tonight went, I think, yeah.
Okay. So it's off. I'll clear my calendar.
Yeah, as far as I know, unless an emergency comes up.
Okay. So just a couple of things to keep in mind in terms of the upcoming agendas. I don't know whether or not we didn't formally recognize Art Lawrence in the report. Also, if that firefighter got retired after many, many years, Karska is available to come, that would be great. And also the promotion of the police lieutenant.
Yep.
I'm in contact with Luzi Sabados's office and also Homerson's office about getting on the calendar for a November date to come in, come in front of our committee.
Okay.
And we did talk about November 26th being the presentation by the Master Plan Implementation Committee of the report.
What's, which date? The 26th. 26th, right. And just to keep on the radar, we wanted to follow up from the PQV recommendation on the quarries, and also around the emergency management director stipend. Anything else that...
No, the quarry, the quarry thing we wanna add to our agenda for sure.
Yep. And I think in the previous meetings, we talked about the goals, you know, select board goals, and everybody brought forth ideas, and I think I'd like to consolidate that into one document and have the group kind of take a look at it, because we talked about a lot of things from community light to sewer to solar. So I just think what I'll do is I'll combine what people had suggested, and then maybe see where we wanna put our energies, okay?
It might tie in too with the, with the NPI presentation.
Yeah, yeah, good. Right.
Because that theoretically, you know, gets you at least partway down the, down the path for that, because we've done some of that.
Should I?
Initial thinking.
Should we put that on for 26th then?
We might, we might combine that as part of the agenda for the 26th, perhaps.
It'd be good for both sides to hear this.
Yes.
Which one was that? The goal?
The 26th, yeah, just the goals along with the NPI.
Okay.
And is it an existing agenda item here to talk about the open space plan, and, or is that just, because there's some updates on that, open space recreation plan?
It's an depending item, so we can do it.
Okay. Same thing for the municipal vulnerability preparedness plan?
I've actually got an agenda item on it for the municipal vulnerability grant.
Okay. Any questions about Ed's report? No? Okay. Old business, Old Town Hall envelope study, we just got that update?
Yep.
And then East Street Bridge?
Uh, yes. PHB has sent us some updated plans, which I sent along to Mass Works, and Mass DOT was amendable to doing sidewalk on one side along with a bike lane. So we know what that'll be for the bridge, and that will help us as we go forward with planning for the East Street rehabilitation process itself.
Great. All right. New business, review special town mini warrant and assigned reading of articles. Is this the final copy here?
Just go in order and alternate?
Sure.
You, me, Francine, Chris?
Sure.
Is it Maureen?
Yep.
Actually, I wouldn't mind doing the CB, CPC one, since I'm on that committee.
Actually, Virginia does that.
Oh, she does that, oh.
Yep.
Francine's the Article 3. And Chris would be Article, oh, Chris gets a long one.
Yeah, I knew that was what was gonna happen, right?
Which one, FIA?
Chris gets Article 4. Article, yeah, Chris gets Article 6.
Yes, because 4 and 5 are CPC.
4 and 5 are CPC, which Virginia will, Virginia will read.
President, happy to switch with you. I know when I started on the board, I was told that's your initiation, you have to read the longest article. But I'm happy to switch if you really don't want to.
If I lose my, if I lose my voice tonight, I'm gonna...
You let me know, I'm happy to switch. If you'd rather do the first one.
So Maureen would be back to 7, and Matt, you'll have 8. Correct? Yep.
But all we read, though, is the actual motion. So even though it's a lengthy, you only have to do is read them where it says the motion.
Oh, okay, we're not reading this whole, this article, it's just...
I thought you did read the articles.
I don't know, we'll have to ask Robert, but I...
I probably read the articles.
In the, in the practice meeting you did last week, he read the entire thing, but maybe that was because of how he does it, but...
We read the article and the motion.
You read the article and...
The entire thing?
And not the summary? Or, what about the summary?
Not, not the summary.
Not the summary.
You read the article and you wait to make a motion, I think.
Wow. Well, 6 is pretty...
You wanna switch with me?
I'm 39.
I wouldn't mind.
It's good. So then Chris is gonna take Article 2.
Okay.
And I'll take the other one. Chris, you're taking Article 2, and I'm taking your Article 6.
Chris, 2. Francine, 3. And then 4 and 5, Virginia. 6 is...
Me?
No.
Matt?
6. 7 is me.
Then I'll take 8, still.
Anything on any of them that we need to know about? There's a special handout that has to do with the East Street Bridge?
Who's talking about it?
Yeah.
It says on here who's saying, who's saying...
I will, I will get up and bring everybody up to speed of why it looks familiar.
Yep.
We've got the PowerPoint presentation again that Charlie had done, and I asked Charlie if he'd like to do it again, and he will.
Okay.
We remind everybody, it's already been passed, essentially.
Yeah, right.
Built into the...
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain to them that, you know, that, you know, there was more than 90 days between that special town meeting and the ballot election. The ballot election still counts. We just have to redo the...
And that was partly because the town voted to reverse the order of the...
Yeah.
Just a question, so if, if I'm reading the articles, then like in number 2, you're gonna stand up and do the summary, is that right? That happens that?
I'm not gonna read the summary, but I'm gonna give it an overview, which...
So you have to hear what's the speaker, that person will get up to the podium and speak to that.
Okay. And then who calls for the motion? Do I, I actually, or does Robert call for the motion?
So you read the article and then read the motion, and then the speaker will get up and address it, and then Robert will direct you what to do behind you.
Okay.
He'll say.
Yeah. Any questions about the warrant?
No.
You seem like you have a question.
Yeah, I mean, I thought we read the article and then the next person read the motion.
We're gonna have to ask Robert. I think that's not the next person.
No, the next person seconds the motion.
Yeah, the next person seconds the motion.
Then we're good.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
And we're all familiar with why we're going to rescind Article 2 of the July 26th, 2018 special town meeting, so that we take one of the two appropriations off our books.
Everybody good?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, the warding of the contract for dispatch radio console replacement to Gustown Communications under state contracts, FIR 04, FIR 04A, and signing the contracts.
So Chief Illingsworth and myself put together a package, sent it out under the state contract, FIR 04 and 04A. Gustown Enterprises, who is the existing vendor for the town that services our radio system, completed the required quote under that and submitted, you know, all the requirements. So I have the contract here, so we're looking to award this contract under state contract FIR 04 and FIR 04A to Gustown Communications in the amount of $92,111.40, as per their vendor quote, under that state contract, to replace the two-seat dispatch radio emergency communications console located in the police department.
We voted on this at a, at a town meeting at one point, right?
As a capital item, correct.
Yeah. Does it fall within the ramifications of that?
Yes.
Okay.
It does.
And we have a warrant tonight about an old bill on there. What was the reason for that?
There's a $270 old bill back from fiscal year 18, where we had asked them to reprogram some of the portable radios in the police department to an East Hampton frequency, which they did. And for some reason, that invoice never got paid, and Gustown had not followed it up.
Was it discovered during an audit or something?
No, actually, I don't know, it's because, you know, Ian's been working with them on this or what have you, but, you know, they finally came back and said, "By the way, you've got this very old invoice," so...
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they did the, they did the work we asked them to. You know, unfortunately, you know, whether it never came through, never got, you know, sent, we lost it, what have you, but, like I say, they did, they did the work, they were a good vendor, what have you with them, so...
Okay. Can I just ask some questions about the assumptions? They checked every one of them.
Mm-hmm.
Meaning, any places where they said they're not going to do things, or they're making certain assumptions about the existing electronic equipment, so on and so forth?
Yep.
If that isn't the case, this could go up. They get in, they start to do the work, and they find that the existing electronic equipment needs to be relocated, or they need to have a bucket truck? Those are all, would those all be additional costs?
Yep. Potentially. I mean, they, they are the ones that service our system, so they are familiar with it. They know. They know.
What page was that on?
I was gonna say, they're the existing vendor, and they don't, they don't understand. I'd be not happy about that.
Okay. And then the only other, other thing I had was, this is an annual software and hardware maintenance, it comes up to about $9,000 a year going forward. The way I read this...
We've, we've always had that with them, correct?
Okay, so that's...
Yeah.
We know that. Okay, then I'm fine.
Someone like to make a motion to accept this?
I move to award the dispatch radio console replacement to Gustown Communications under contract FIR 04 and 04A.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
I...
Is that an official copy there, or is that one that you printed out from?
This is in the packet.
Yeah, there's four copies here that will need to be signed.
Why don't you just keep them all together, or we'll have them all together, too?
All right, let's skip over Sharon Hart. Do we have to just accept that?
Yeah. I'll just keep going. Um, who knows? Representative of the Hampshire Regional School District requests for negotiations participation, Educators Association of M4, 2019 at 6:30 PM, chairs of the five towns to meet and choose a representative. That's where we were last time. John Martin has been our representative in the past. He's not here, so I'll suggest that he be nominated. Just kidding. Is there anybody here that would like to jump up and act as you that, or...
Does he not wanna do it?
I don't, I didn't ask him, I didn't discuss this outside of committee. We can, we could consider nominating him based on acceptance and confirm it at the next meeting, but, actually, the next meeting is after.
It's gonna be after his 12 hours.
Doesn't he, do we know if he wants to be on it?
I don't know. Do you know, Ed?
No. I doubt it's a affiliate, sorry.
Are we able to appoint him, and based on his ability, yes or no, and then have a contingency backup? Could we do a vote?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about, having a contingency.
I think he did a good job on it, so I would like to see him on it.
Yeah.
So I'm fine with being the backup for it.
Okay. How are other people feel about that?
I'm fine.
That's fine. Okay. Would you, someone like to make a motion to that effect, then?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we appoint John to be on this committee for the Hampshire Regional Educators Association meeting, and with Matt as the backup, in case John decides not to do.
Okay. That sounds great. Would someone like to second that?
Can I second that?
Can we say something?
Sure.
Okay. Margaret Person and David Street.
Could you just, can you just come up here?
Oh, sure.
Thanks.
Great.
Because it is, the camera is on, thanks.
So it's not definite that John would be the representative, so there would still need to be a vote. So I just wanna make it sure that people at home aren't assuming that it's going to be the Southampton rep.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that.
Because there will be a vote amongst the representatives.
I think we were clear about that because of the pass, but thank you for clarifying that for everybody else, that it will only be based on who is selected as their representative. So we have a motion, is there a second?
So then how would the process of that work? Like, just hypothetically, like if John were accepted by the committee, then that would be fine, but if he weren't, then we would just have to come up with another person?
No, they would not, we would not have a presentation.
It's only gonna be one rep for all five towns, right?
Oh, is that how it works?
So then the chairs...
And John, John was voted last year representative.
Oh, got it.
The five chairs are gonna meet on that November 4th.
One rep for all five towns. All right, got it, got it, got it. All right, understood. Cool.
Okay, so we have a motion. I don't know if there was a second yet.
I didn't hear a second.
Second, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, then?
No.
Aye. Thank you. Matt, can you step up?
I think it's, if there were each...
She's got a sign.
Two signatures.
Oh, there was each two.
Okay. Policy for restriction of local licenses and permits timeline.
And to go along with, since we left, the article opened-ended, and Town Council recommended that we do a policy separately rather than having it in the bylaw for the timeline to, for the delinquency. I put together a, a policy for that.
Okay.
Policy on timeline for delinquency of taxes and fees from general bylaw, Article 7, restriction on issuances of local licenses or permits. This policy shall take effect upon the passing of Article 6 at the Southampton Special Town Meeting of October 22nd, 2019, and the Attorney General's approval of that amended bylaw for the restriction on issuance of local licenses and permits, because if either one of those two items doesn't happen, then this policy isn't needed.
Okay.
This policy will be used in conjunction with said town, town general bylaw, restriction on issuances of local licenses and permits. The time for a person, corporation, or business enterprise who has neglected or refused to pay any local taxes, fees, assessments, betterments, or any other municipal charges, where an officer, department, or commission, or division may deny, revoke, or suspend any license or permit, including renewals and transfer, in the town of Southampton shall be greater than six months in delinquency. And that is basically what the Select Board separately had come up with for a recommendation. The Finance Committee came up with the same recommendation, first, greater than six months, and the internal finance team had come up with the same, greater than six month delinquency. It seemed to be a fair, shall we say, balance between the thought of possibly, you know, someone maybe losing their job and being on hard times for a short period of time, and also, you know, the larger, larger businesses in town to have maybe a little more of a stick to influence them if they were falling behind in their taxes to get caught.
And this refers to building permits, and that not specifically all permits in town?
It's not all permits in town. It, it does cover like liquor license, cannabis, killer, food, cook, building permits, could be permits given by the planning board. It does not cover like marriage licenses, birth certificates, items like that.
Is that clarified in there?
It's actually clarified.
In the article?
That's still in the article.
Okay. Does it have to be in the policy?
No.
Okay.
No, the only thing that really isn't covered that we wanted to is the actual time of delinquency that we want to have our departments and treasurer collector file, was the six month time period.
Okay.
Rather than a year period?
Correct. Exactly. Because that, that was what the old state statute said until they changed that in the Municipal Modernization Act back in 2017.
So you want us to approve this and sign it pending approval at the town meeting?
Right. If, if it doesn't get approved at town meeting tonight, this isn't needed. If it doesn't get approved, if it get approved tonight at town meeting, if Attorney General's Office didn't approve it, this does not go into effect, but at least it would give the Select Board the ability, if anybody asked the question, okay, is the permit, is the policy in place? You can say, yes, we have voted on it. If it passes tonight and is approved by the Attorney General for the bylaw amendment, it's good to go and gets used with it.
Do you have to make a motion, or are you just signing it?
No, we would need to make a motion and vote on it. As a policy. No, we would need to make a motion and vote on it as a policy.
I move to accept the policy on timeline for delinquency of taxes as relates to local licenses and permits.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone else to say that?
Yes.
While you're doing that, I'll skip over the MVP and come right back to it. There are two resignations. One of them is Richard Flaherty from the Historical Commission, and the other one is Sharon Hart from the Board of Health.
You have to accept both resignations.
I'll second that.
All right, Matt and Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you have an update on the MVP?
Yes, and the application timeline to actually become a approved or authorized municipal vulnerability preparedness community is open. And I had remembered that Mary Moynihan from Fussin O'Neil, along with giving the presentation on the small sewers in town, had also gone into the MVP and Fussin O'Neil's and her experience with the MVP application process. And they have a very good track record with that process. In fact, in the last round of grants, their client community's got twenty-five percent of the monies that we're awarded. So I talked to Mary about it, and they would be willing to do the application for us with us getting them the information and putting that in at no cost to the community. The caveat here is they would expect to get somewhere between fifty, or we would get, the town would get about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars in a grant to go along with that to do the next stepping stones of naming your priorities and how to go about it. The caveat that they would ask of the town is if we utilize them to do the MVP application for us. And we did get the award of the grant that in that next step that we would give them the contract to do that and pay for that out of those grant funds that we get. And from what I've talked with Mary about and heard from her and seen their track record, I think would bode very well for the community to go down that road.
So Mary was the one that came to speak to us when we had the presentation on Limited Sewer. And that's a company that she works for. And, you know, PVPC is also an organization that helps communities to secure the grants. And this MVP, municipal vulnerability preparedness grant focuses on a lot of environmental sort of climate change. And so they would do the work to submit the initial application, and then there's a number of things that have to happen. Then people are convened to talk about what project would then be submitted. So I'm just wondering, Cindy, if you have any questions about that?
No. I actually spoke to Ed several weeks ago, and he told me that he was gonna be talking to Fussin O'Neil about the potential for it. I just know that there's a first round of grants, and then once you're identified as an MVP community, then you become eligible for further grants.
Correct.
Which I know something from in a very big way. So I'm really glad to hear this is moving. I just wonder about timeframe. What do you anticipate? Are you with Mary?
That this would be done before the deadline, and we would be in this next round for the application process to be designated.
Do you know what that deadline is?
It's either January or February.
I thought it was shorter, but yeah. Anyway, the reason I ask this, because she's the chair of the Open Space, and we discussed this several times about this community would be ideal for this particular grant. So I'm glad also to hear that it's moving forward.
And one of, shall we say, the caveats for the ideas is when you put your priorities in place, that you do it in such a way that it's going to actually fall into the different categories where they're awarding money. So you're taking from the top of your list.
And you will be convening individuals in the town, police chief, bar chief, others who will need to submit what they see as part of a prioritization.
Yeah, and then after that is when we get into, you know, goals and the priorities, then we would basically put those same people together to talk about what we see as our goals and priorities and how we can tweak that. So it fits into the funding stream.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a question. There's nothing unusual about having somebody do the application and then just sort of be the one that is chosen for the...
Well, that's typically the way it's done.
Yeah.
Because I know PVPC, like I said, has actually done this with a number of communities, and then they're the ones that then convene the next step.
That's right, yeah.
But I think that Fussin O'Neil, I think, has a good track record.
They have a very good track record. I was impressed.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question about another grant, the Community Compact Grant Application? Did that go out?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
Yeah, to the tune of, I think, forty-six thousand dollars and some change. I stretched it from, I think, what they were trying to, they were trying to condense it into like, maybe, in my opinion, like, one pocket of a big project, but I probably covered maybe three different aspects of...
And this is focused on IT?
All on IT. It's, this focuses for what I put in, and Art helped me, helped me with it, was for backup, cybersecurity, firewall assessment, further assessment for the town hall, and I'm gonna forget something.
No, the last one?
I actually put in for the voice over IP, over IP phone system also. And I'm sure there's something in there that I have forgotten about.
Did we manage the...
And yet, the...
Existing?
Like I said, and I'm still sure that there's something in that part that I forgot.
That's the electronic records system, which would help our bylaws committee greatly.
Oh, and the other thing I did put in for was five thousand dollars to redesign and redo, re-host our town website.
Good, great, awesome. Thank you for doing both of those.
Oh, you're very welcome.
That's good, that's great.
Yeah, I've had a busy couple of weeks.
Yeah, appreciate that. You've changed yourself when you're in port.
You'd be surprised at the things that we do every day that you just kind of take for granted.
That's a big one, though.
That was a big one. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess we're gonna have to cut off all these PCFs, which is very unfortunate because some of these positions have been waiting. I wonder if we do need to have a meeting soon after the finance committee meets?
We may have to. There's a risk that, I don't know.
Okay. Can you keep the clauses?
Yeah.
There's some of these folks that have to send them back, and they've been on the radar for a while.
The one I really feel bad about is the...
Tom Clark?
Well, I feel bad about them all, but I really, really, really feel bad about the backup driver for the COA, because that got sent back just because it changed the funding source from basically, I think, one grant form to another grant, yeah.
Maybe we should think about meeting the twenty-ninth if we have to.
Well, it does make any sense to schedule a meeting if the finances...
Well, if they haven't that right, exactly.
But we can also approve that one pending approval by the finance committee.
Good, yeah.
Wait a second. I want to tell you, hold on. I've seen all of these at PQB, if it matters. PQBs all approve these, which I'm sure you already know. I think we should just approve them all pending finance approving them. Now, I will say, if you want a couple of data points, we already know about Town Cork, we already know about Consulon Ainging. The Highway Department mechanic, just to give you the background information, is we are increasing the starting hourly salary to attract more candidates. That position has been posted for over a year.
Is it in their budget?
It is in their budget. He says, figure that out. He's been unable to fill that position, and people are not applying for it.
Right.
So, and he needs, he needs a mechanic. I mean, we talked to him, we called Randall while we were at PQB meeting last week and spoke with him about this, because we were obviously concerned. And we're also a little bit concerned that we were, we also spoke a little bit about, not to open up Pandora's Box here, that this is, you know, obviously a union, their union, you know.
CBA.
Yeah, CBA. And so there's, there's no issues with either of these things. Randall's thought this through, even with the stuff that we've been working on for COA stuff.
So is that a new salary range on this?
It's not a new salary range. It's within the existing one. It's just a raise to try to attract more candidates.
Okay.
This does look like it's been posted since February.
Yeah, yeah. It's been posted for a long time. It's to replace, it was Roger Bunn, Roger Rolls, junior, leaving. And then the other ones are...
Police Department needs to build the lieutenant.
Yep. And then the Highway, then the Highway Department is a merit increase, is really the person went and got a place and got additional certifications. It's not a merit, it's not a merit, but he got, he got an additional certification and an ability to do something that we need in town, and he's getting an increase for that. And then part-time police officer. So if it were, if it were my choice, I would approve all of these pending plans.
Is that a motion?
I will move to approve all of the PRFs and the PCFs that are listed here on our agenda pending finance committee's approval.
I'll second that. Can we have Ed review them first to make sure that it completes?
We have the right forms.
Yeah, sure. So I'll just amend my motion. I mean, they all have to be complete. We did look at these, and we've been, given that what we've been doing in Select Board, I've been monitoring this on PQB, so I think that they, these are all fairly well buttoned.
I looked over them quickly. They look all complete, but I will give them a more diligent look.
Yeah, I mean, basically, the things that we're concerned about is that if it's part-time, that it's below, that it's specifically listed as below nineteen and a half hours, non-benefit, that type of thing. So we have a motion.
Motion.
Frank's in?
You motion.
I motion. Do you second it?
All those in favor? Approving these pending approval by the finance committee and Ed's review. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now, I'm just looking to see if I missed putting on the change orders for the water.
No, it's down to another department requiring signatures.
Okay, great.
No licenses and permits. How about warrants?
Okay. We have payroll twenty-sixteen for two-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and thirty-five cents. We have a payroll deduction twenty-sixteen for forty-six thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, we're up to change order for the water department for section improvements, change of material of sand for turtle protection and erosion control.
Yeah.
This is where it comes to us before.
Yeah, and one of the requirements that came back, and we knew that the turtle protection came up at the well, is they, the recommendation is a different, go ahead.
Silk fence.
Silk fence, yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, silk fence. They had a fancier term for it. So the change order is for thirty-three-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and forty cents for a different silk fence.
Okay. Get comfortable approving it.
I move to approve that change order for the water department for turtle protection and erosion control.
Also, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Give me a minute to pass it through. This is the other...
Those are signed, please.
Thanks. And then I might maybe suggest that we pass the minutes and go into executive session.
Yep, that's what I'm thinking, too.
Just for reading.
Huh?
These are just for...
Just for, yeah, just for reading signature.
I'm just looking. So just the Open Space and Recreation Plan, we already have an email out for people to suggest dates they can meet. So that's good. And then you already did the town hall, and also the Greenway. Anything else before we vote to go into the second session?
I just hope that the Open Space group can meet before the end of the month to get started, because I'm just afraid of how long this process takes. I know ConCon is getting very nervous about not having something up to date that they can use to look at grants and so forth. Sooner the better.
Can I ask a question?
Ed, right here?
Yes.
Can she ask a question?
Of course. Cindy Palmer, Glendale Road. I walked in as Ed was talking, and I just need clarification on the legislation related to utilizing CPA funds for, potentially for either the purchase or the rental of the property that would be Greenway. Just clarifying what you said.
What's that?
Ed.
Yeah, you just mentioned about the legislature and whether or not...
CPA funds could be used for acquisition of the lands for the Greenway. It's now owned by the railroad.
Correct.
Okay. And the reason is, because tonight we're gonna have to vote on more distribution of CPA funds. And I just wondered if I may ask you, if you don't mind, to speak in town meeting about what that's gonna mean and whether we should be sort of protecting our CPA funds for the use of that.
I don't think that you could, I don't think you could say that.
And Robert's not gonna like that.
Yeah.
Well, pardon me?
It has to be only the motion that's being addressed. And I think that might be a question you might want to ask to Virginia. I understand that there might be...
Only Virginia can speak to the potential for utilizing that. Okay.
No, because you gotta speak just to the motion. We've gotten in this trap before.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Well, good.
You can ask Virginia any question about her opinion about whether or not, how much funds do we have, and what will be the impact of, oh, sorry. You can ask her that question, but I don't think Virginia will...
That won't fly. Okay.
All right, so we are going to, is there any open time for the public? Would anybody like to say anything else? In that case, then we are going to go into executive session. And hang on, I will find the copy. Executive session under General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A three, discuss strategy to affect the litigation of the matter of Virginia Sherr Solander versus Southampton Select Board at all U.S. District Court of under sixteen C D, one two zero three, with the chair, with the discussing standard open time. You may have got to, I don't know, back in the morning, but she knows the town. So roll call, I have a motion to go into executive session first.
Motion to go into executive session.
I'll second it.
Okay. And a roll call vote?
I'll sign it.
Roll and die.
Okay. And we will not be coming back in open session, or?
I would, I would say yes.
We will.
And then we'll...
Close it after the meeting.
We'll recess for that and...
Yep.
You're turning this off?
Yep.
Okay.
If I can...
Wonderful running.
Roll the tape!